All right. Good evening, everybody. So on behalf of Chairman Rich, I'm just going to pretend I'm him for the first portion of the meeting until he gets connected and can fulfill his duties as usual, but until then you'll have to bear with me. So Condo or the Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two virtual meeting for planning and zoning. I can go ahead and do the roll call, Rich Roberts. Mr. Allard, I am here. Commissioner Hammer. No hammer. Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Oikle. Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Mickey.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Here. Commissioner Vera.
Here.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioner Liam Bruny.
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
So we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, we got eleven. Nice job, everybody. No old business, moving right out to some new business. So item three point one, public hearing, three thousand eight twenty-one Z. Stefan and Kara Crespo seeking a special permit in accordance with section three, five, one, B, one vehicular storage of the Weathersfield zoning regulations to park a snowmobile trailer in the driveway at fifteen Crest Street. Is there someone on behalf of the applicant?
I don't see them here, Ryan.
I see Stefan.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yep, I see them. And just I I accidentally skipped over. So being a public hearing, we are going to hear a presentation from the applicant. We'll have some questions, we'll have some back and forth, we will hear from the public, if there's anybody here from the public who wishes to comment, we'll take that into account. You know, if and give the applicant a chance to address any comments that they get from the public, after which we'll, if we're satisfied with the information we have and we're going to make a motion, we will close the hearing, have a discussion and then rule on it. So with that, I will hand the floor over to the Crespos.
How you doing? Thanks, everybody. I'm Stefan, this is my wife Kara, and you'll probably hear our daughter making some noise in the background because it's not not quite bedtime yet. So I apologize in advance. So so this was, I'll just go over, I didn't write anything out, but this is in a nutshell, this is for us to have a ten-foot snowmobile trailer in our driveway. Basically for the months, basically for the winter months. So for the months, I believe I put on the application.
December through April.
Yeah, December through April. During those months, it kind of I don't really have the option to put it in the backyard due to the weather. And if you are familiar with Crest Street, it's very, we have a lot of issues with water in the yards. So in the summer months, it will reside in the back of the yard as it has. And then in the winter months, we, you know, it's a it's a small trailer, it's ten-foot clamshell. You can't, you know, if you're not familiar, it's it does house two snowmobiles in it, but it's it it's like a
It's enclosed?
Yeah, it's enclosed. So we did include pictures. I don't know if you guys all have that, but there is photos of the of the trailer. It is enclosed, you can't see the machines inside. And I tried to take a couple of shots of sort of what it looks like if you were to be driving up and down the street or walking up and down the street. Because of its size and the trucks that we have, the our two vehicles in the driveway, you can't even really see it very well, even when it's in the driveway, it's sort of surrounded by our vehicles most of the time. And during those winter months, most weekends, weather permitting, it's not even here. We go up north as a family and we snowmobile on as many weekends as the snow allows. So that's that's really it, guys, and we're here to answer any questions as well. We tried to be, you know, as descriptive as possible in the in the application and and provide some good pictures so everybody could see.
Mr. Chairman, could I pose a question, please?
I'll speak on behalf of Rich, yes.
Thank you. It it seems that you have previous approval. I wasn't on the commission, but if I understand correctly, you had previous approval for both the snowmobile trailer and I guess it's an RV in your picture there as well?
Yeah, so I'll I'll address that. Thanks for asking. So I I also I also thought we had preapproval for the snowmobile trailer. The snowmobile trailers, we've been homeowners in Weathersfield since two thousand and fourteen. And the snowmobile trailer has been here since we moved in. And we pulled the permit for the trailer, which is what you're referring to or may recall. And we've never had any issues with the snowmobile trailer. It's always been in the driveway for, again, since two thousand and fourteen. Since since we've owned it and where it's been, it's we haven't changed where it's been. Like I said, in the summer months, it I I don't need, you know, I don't want it in my way, right? So it it benefits me for it to be out of the way and in the backyard during the summer months, but in the winter months, we obviously trailer it in and out almost every weekend if we can. But it's never been an issue since two thousand and fourteen. I I guess maybe when we had our hearing for the camper, maybe I just understood wrong because I would have addressed it had I known that it couldn't be in my driveway during the winter months. So I'm I'll be a hundred percent honest, I'm still not a hundred percent clear on why it's not allowed in my driveway during the winter months, as it's never been an issue, but there is, there is one complainant that's not in our neighborhood that sort of keeps calling out just about anything we do wrong. So I think that's where this came from, to be honest with you, and why this has come up just as of recent, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, I guess this will be a bit of a refresher for me. I was at that hearing. So I remember then we discussed the camper, we discussed the potential, because we did discuss the snowmobile trailer and if we could shift everything backwards, but that would have required, was there was there something in the back that was a reason why?
There is.
Push it all the way back?
Yeah, so.
You refresh my memory on that.
Yeah, sure. So that that was discussed and what what I thought we communicated, and I could be wrong, but what I thought we communicated is that we would swap them during, you know, during the seasons, right? So the the camper obviously is like a more of a summer sort of toy. And the snowmobile trailer is more of a winter toy. So in those, you know, in the summer months, the the snowmobile trailer goes in the back and then in the winter months, it goes in front of the camper. So like I said, during the winter, I really, you know, with snow and and even if there's not snow, getting any trailer in the backyard is just going to be, you know, it's just going to wreck my yard and potentially get stuck and have to get pulled out. So if I had, if I had the means to do it, I I would have done it and we wouldn't be here now. But unfortunately, it's not really an option to put one of them back there during the winter months, winter months. So but the the camper trailer, as you can see probably in the pictures, is beside the house.
Also, you have a fenced in, this is George, you have a fenced in backyard.
That's correct. Yeah.
There tends to be water coming down through all the houses there.
There there is. Yeah, it's it's not just us. It's it's
Not conducive really to moving anything back in there. I know it's not bad, it's just enough to be annoying and not not allow you to do that.
Yeah, that's that's true. And, you know, we we actually, when we had the fence put in, and this is before we even knew that there would be an issue, I purposely put in a extra-large gate behind the camper so that we could put the snowmobile trailer back there. It's with major precision, we get it through there, but you know, it's about an inch of clearance on each side, but we can do it. And we have done it to put it in the back. So it's and that was without sort of any probing or pushing for us to do it, it was just to for me to have it out of the way, right? So we purposely did that. So I I can actually get it back there in the summer months, but it's not something I could I could again, do during the winter or sort of wet months, and it's certainly something I wouldn't be able to do like, you know, every other weekend. Yeah. I'd probably end up wrecking the fence if I if I had to be honest at some point.
Does this does this trailer fit in the garage?
No.
Ryan, I got a question.
It's too tall.
Too tall.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wish.
I got a question.
Go for it.
I I'm gonna guess that you would take off as early as you can on Friday and you probably end up coming back from up north late Sunday when you have good snow. Is that pretty accurate?
That's that's worst case scenario. Yeah, sometimes we sometimes we try to squeak out a Thursday to Monday, but yes, that's that's like typically what it is.
So a lot of times the trailer's gone three to four days in a a week in the season that you can use your sleds.
It is. We we have friends that also ski and snowmobile that have a place up there. So it's we are back and forth as much as possible on the weekend. Yeah.
And you may even leave your trailer up there depending on conditions and whatnot.
We do, we do sometimes it gets tough with weather because if I leave it up there and we get, you know, if they get dumped on and and, you know, then I'm like trying to dig it out, right? And it can get stuck there. So we actually broached that like, hey, maybe we could just leave it up there for the winter. So this is not an issue, but it's it's really not possible.
I understand. I got you. Yep.
Yeah.
I'm good. Thank you.
Ryan, can I ask a question? David Drake? I'm not quite clear on the camper. Why is isn't the camper can't be put in the back during off-season? From your letters, it sound like you didn't use it all, you don't use it all winter. So why why can't that be putting all the way back there and put the snowmobile next to the house?
That that wouldn't fit. The snowmobile trailer will fit, but the camper won't.
It won't fit in the backyard?
Also, in our previous hearing, it was discussed that having it beside our house actually benefits all our neighbors from seeing it most of the time. So if we put it all the way in the back of the house, if you were at the bottom of Crest Street and looked up everybody's backyards, right now it's completely open. You could see probably four or five houses up all through the backyards. And if it was all the way in the back, it would be more of an eyesore than it would be.
You'd end up actually seeing it more.
So yeah. And then just just to clarify, as part of the approval in two thousand and nineteen, they were permitted to keep that RV in the driveway as long as it's not forward of the house.
Correct.
Okay.
And it it backs up to the fence and the pad that it's sitting on. So if they were going to move it back, they were going to have to do some either regrading, more pad, gravel, something.
Okay, so the yard's not fenced in. It's just a fence behind it. It's not a
There's a fence behind it.
No, it is fenced in. The yard is fenced.
The backyard is fenced into the back.
Okay, so if you if you put the Okay, so I understand you have permission to put it next to the house, but if you so you're saying you can't put in the backyard and people would see it? How would they see it if it's fenced in?
It's just a chain link fence. And this is a
Okay, okay. I couldn't tell the pictures. I just saw the white fence in front. Okay.
Oh, yeah, you might be seeing the one of our neighbors up a couple houses up has like a big white panel fence. That might be what you're seeing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically what they're saying is where it is now is the least intrusive.
Yeah, that's what we have a permit for, also to keep the trailer on the side of the house from the one in two thousand and nineteen.
Right. And I think we we touched on the snowmobile trailer during that application, but we weren't addressing it because only one one thing at a time, like you go.
Yeah, I guess. Sure.
So so actually, that snowmobile trailer was also part of the approval. However, that was also not supposed to be forward of the house, and that's the issue that the zoning enforcement officer cited them for.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought that application was strictly for the RV. Okay.
No, they did get approval for both the RV and the snowmobile trailer. It's just the location of the trailer on the driveway.
And and like I said, that's our fault, you know, and the trailer has been here since, like I said, since we moved in and it's it's not my goal to get away without pulling a permit for it. If we need to pull a permit for it, I just didn't I didn't know that we needed a permit for the small trailer. We learned that we needed a permit for the camper, which is what we addressed. I didn't realize that we needed a separate permit to keep the the snowmobile trailer in the driveway because it's it's been there since two thousand and fourteen. I didn't think it was a problem until recently, to be honest with you. Or I would have
Also, Ryan, just to note, while this application is the result of a order issued by the zoning enforcement officer, for the record, three neighbors have submitted letters of support.
Correct, yeah. If you want, I can, I can go through those.
Sure.
So, yeah, to bring into the record, we do have three letters of support. I have an email here from Catherine Rosania, who is in favor, two boys live across the street, so they live at Six Crest. Received your letter, positive review.
They would have direct view of it just just for an FYI. They are sort of just diagonal across from us on the same street. So they would have you, they do have view of it.
Down the street?
Yeah, they're kind of just across and one down. So they have sort of direct view of it, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another letter of support, we have an email from Judy Williams saying, I don't care if you park your trailer in the driveway.
They are directly next to us.
They we share a property line with them, so they're another direct neighbor. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I also have a lengthy email from Michelle Lavoy, sixteen Westwood Drive. Very positive review, speaking highly of them being very neighborly. And so they're applauding them just basically on their their yard and the way they keep their the rest of their property. Very positive review. And that's about the gist of that. I don't know if you want me to read that entire email.
There is one more letter submitted from Josh and Diana Tryon from forty-two Crest Street, also in support.
Okay, I must have missed that one. Apologies.
They are they are also on Crest, just a few houses up. And Michelle is directly behind us. We also share a property line, so she would see it as well. These are all direct neighbors, just to clarify.
Okay. While we're in the mood to get the take of the town, if there's anybody, any members of the public that wish to add some comments, now would be the time. Either raise your hand virtually or start talking. Couple phone numbers down below. I'm not sure I want to make sure that they're not just away. So we got a eight-three-eight number and a two-nine-six number. Go on once, go on twice. If anybody wants to chime in, we'll of course give them time. Cindy, I don't suppose you're here for this meeting for this application.
Ryan, Cindy is our new recording secretary.
Hi, Cindy. It's nice to meet you.
Yes.
All right.
Make a motion. Well, too early.
I think I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close.
Good, George.
Good. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question here? This we approved two years ago. Is it, does it come up every two years or is this a different issue from the camper and that's why it's here?
There was no expiration on the previous approval.
There was no.
Right. So there was there was no time that they had to come back. This was the understanding was that all recreational vehicles would be behind the house. And since that's not the case, that's why we're seeing it again.
Behind the front of the house.
Behind the front face of the house, correct?
Yeah.
I would propose that this this, if this were to be approved, it would run in the same fashion, so they don't have to keep coming back.
That's the way I would feel.
I would make the motion, but I don't have the documented on my phone in front of me. It's like, don't have the number.
I I agree with that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question about didn't we approve, I can't remember now, recently, someone came to us about placing a boat, was it in the front yard? Is that was that on Crest Street somewhere? That that application, that wasn't that long ago, right?
A few months. I believe that was last fall.
Yeah, where where is that house relative to you? I mean, I'm just trying to picture.
Just a few houses up across the street. Yeah.
Yeah, so I I know that they came a couple wanting to keep their boat during the boating season and otherwise they would put it somewhere else. I forgot exactly where.
Well, they they cram it in their garage, actually. They partially disassemble the boat and they put it in their garage. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we we had that conversation. I I kept on in my head when I was looking at this application confusing the two just because they were relatively similar.
So I mean, I'm just trying to draw comparisons here in my head. Okay, I I do remember that they were going to try to put in the garage. I'm glad they're able to do that, but you said it's impossible at all to put this in the garage.
It's it's too tall. Unfortunately, our it's not, it's not a length issue, actually. Um, yeah, it's a width and height, height issue. If if it was short enough and not so wide, I would be able to get it in the garage because I do, it is, we only have a single bay, but it is long enough. Because it's the trailer's only ten feet, but it's a height so that the clamshell, the way it's it it's a, I don't know if you have the pictures there, but it's it's basically a, it's an enclosure and that enclosure will not clear the garage, unfortunately.
Okay, understand.
Yeah.
So either way, say again.
Oh, go ahead. I was gonna make a motion. Go ahead.
I want you to
Let me just let me just finish my thought here. And and it's it's clear to me, and I want to make sure I understand right, that you're asking for this just for the winter months, correct?
Yeah, because in the in the summer, it's it's in my, you know, it's, we don't obviously use the snowmobiles in the summer. So the trailer can then go in the backyard sort of when, you know, when it's not quite as muddy. So we did put in there from December to April. You know, I guess I'd hate to be pushed to throw it back there when it's like mud season, I guess. Maybe I should clarify that. So sort of, you know, as soon as my yard dries up, I can put it back there because we're not using it anymore, right? So that's that's really the only times it's been in the driveway. Actually, that's not true. Some some years it's been in the driveway, but it's just, it's never been an issue. And we've never had a complaint on it. But as I said, just as recent, so you know, I don't have a problem putting it in the backyard. It's out of my way. We started doing that last year. But yes, so really it's going to be in the driveway for the winter months, you know, which is typically, you know, from Thanksgiving, you know, and sometimes later, because it we typically don't get out till December, but I do have to pull the trailer forward and do maintenance on the snowmobiles and stuff like that. So I try to pull it out, you know, by November, like around Thanksgiving, and then it's it's in the driveway from that point on.
I'm just trying to avoid a future issue. I'm thinking April is going to be wet, exactly what I was thinking.
You know, so as we talk about this.
I'm wondering why you asked for that.
Yeah.
We can't make a motion that says when your yard dries up, that's
Yeah, no, I get it. I I understand that.
So if we wait April, you're going to be constrained to push that back there wet or not. You have to understand that, right?
But they can we can Moshe, the hearing is closed. But if we want to entertain
I got a motion for you, Ryan.
Giving giving hard months, that's on us. And if it's wet, they throw down some plywood and wheel it back. That's that's just the nature of having a recreational vehicle. So I think we stick to, and I don't know, Jim, what you were thinking, but I say we stick to the December to April.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would make a motion to approve application three zero zero eight dash two one dash Z. And I would the the window, I would put December first to the last day of April.
Second, George.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Extentions? All right. Congratulations.
I have a quick question.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, I have a a request.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Tony.
I I would request that the Commission direct the Town Planning Office to you know, provide the applicants with a copy of the resolution that we've just adopted or the approval, given them as precise as language as we can supply as to the wording of the permit that this commission has just granted so that the applicants will have a better idea of what they can do and and not do with respect to compliance with a permit. They've indicated some issues with regards to understanding what their rights and privileges and duties are with respect to the their their previous approval, and I would hope to avoid such confusion in the future on on their part.
Yeah. That's fine.
Thank you.
Tony?
Question for Denise, does this follow the property, Denise?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
This is follow the part property. If the applicant sells their home, does this approval stay with the property?
Yes, the the approval inherently runs with the land. However, it's very specific to that snowmobile trailer and to the location and now to the timeframe that you've assigned.
Thanks for clarifying.
Hey, Ryan, David Drake, I asked Denise another question like what Tony was saying. Is it specific for this trailer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a trailer, this trailer.
It is specific for this trailer.
So if they sell this and buy a new one, they really need to come back and have us take another look?
That's correct.
So if they sell the house, the house has to get the trailer with it, or else they can't do it. Fair enough.
With the housing market the way it is, that would probably be okay.
No, I understand. You know, the only reason I my thought is if you went out and say a year or two bought another one, a new one, it'd be worth it, take another look to see if you could buy a trailer, would maybe fit in the garage. So you wouldn't have to deal with it. But anyways, that's fine.
That would probably stop me from buying another trailer.
Even better. All right. So that one is closed. Chairman Roberts, you are here.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Mark. Yes, I am here. Hi, Rich. Hey.
With that, I can I can keep it up, or I can at least read this while you're getting yourself situated. Moving on to item three point three, public hearing, three thousand eleven twenty-two Z. JPL Transportation seeking a special permit in accordance with section five point three of the Weathers of the Weathersfield regulations to park a box truck at sixty-one Arrow Road. Do we have anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Yes or no?
Hi, my name is John. JPL.
There you are. Ready to hear your application when you are.
So, John, if you wanted to just give a brief description of your proposal.
Yeah, sure. It's a bus road twenty-six fifth and also is in the lower parking lot in the sixty-one Arrow in in the building. As I say, it's the lower parking lot. We usually use the truck in, in the building. Uh, as I say, it's the lower parking lot. We usually use the truck at night. So we usually start between ten and twelve, uh, uh, between eleven and midnight. And we return around like, um, ten AM every day. Sunday, no, Monday, Monday to Saturday or Monday to Sunday depends on, of the, of the rules of the, well, no, uh, you know, what kind of work we, we find, what kind of laws we, we find. Uh, it's just one bus truck and it's in the last coral at the end of the, you know, the lower parking lot.
What kind of, kind of make a mild truck? How many foot?
Twenty-six.
Twenty, was like international or freightliner?
No, it's a freightliner into one or six.
All right.
Are you, I see a, an image of a seven by seven proposed shed being pointed at where I'm assuming is where you want your box truck?
Yes, yes, it's in the corner in, uh, yeah, as I say, lower parking lot in that building.
And that's the, the, the curb stopper, the, the line where everybody parks now, that is the limit of the patunus and you'd be parking this on gravel.
Yes.
Uh, Rich, I have a question for you, Rich.
Yep.
Uh, going back to his previous, uh, applications, Denise, you might be able to help out. I believe there were, uh, parameters of fueling and repairing, et cetera, of his other vehicles. Uh, that he parks there, correct of what he can and can't do and when he can, when he can and can't do it and what he can and can't do. I believe there were parameters put on his last parking application.
Uh, yes, uh, the application that was approved in January of twenty twenty-one, um, included ten can, or I'm sorry, nine conditions, including, um, um, management protocols and, uh, timeframes of operation. Uh, my understanding, John, though, is that, uh, the majority of those vehicles are no longer parked on site.
No, yes, the, the, the truck is going to be between, is going to be in the parking lot between like ten, eleven AM every day until almost midnight, around like eleven, twelve, around, around that, around, around that time.
Now, I think the question was whether the trucks that you had the approval for from a year ago are parked on site or not.
I know that, but that approval was for, for, for daycabs, for trucks. But I already moved those trucks to another parking in Berlin. So it's a different, it's a different kind of trucks.
So how, so you're just looking, so you got rid of all your tractors? They don't, they no longer park there? You just want to park this one straight up?
Yes, yes, just one bus truck.
One straight truck?
Yes.
And are you going to fuel it onsite or is it going to be offsite field?
No, onsite, onsite.
Oh, offsite, so you just go roadside or whatever. Okay. What about maintenance on that truck? Is this the same as the other one? It's a leased truck. So it gets all repaired. It, all the maintenance is done at the lease facility?
No, yes, all the maintenance is in, in, in freighter in Gabrielli or freightliner of half. So it's not in place.
Got it.
This is George. You don't anticipate any other requests like this, like this truck in the future?
No, I don't think so. No, so far, no.
Okay, thank you.
Denise, David, why does he even need a permit? He's already permitted for the ten, just because the truck's different.
Uh, the application, the application that he received in January twenty twenty-one expires in January, in, in January twenty twenty-two. Was for one year.
Yep.
And it was in a different place though, too.
Yes, it was.
Mm-hmm. There was a money paid.
Up and back, right?
Yeah.
How many power units was he approved for? Like fifteen or something? I can't remember.
Ten.
And, but so he's going, so, so he's losing nine units. Okay, yep. Got it.
So Denise, the only reason we're listening to this application is because it's expiring then?
Yes.
Or it's, it's a date issue.
And I mean, essentially he's, um, reducing the request.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's really reducing the request. So he's got to do it because it's running out of time. I get it.
Yeah.
I'm good right now.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the commission have questions for the applicant?
Not, are there any?
I just have one quick question. Where were the ten when you did have them? Where were those ten trucks parked?
Uh, it's because I get another parking lot, a B parking lot. It's so most in that parking lot, they have a main is directed from Ameritas, a third party company. And also is, is close to the Burlington bike. And, and it's, um, is, is basically is, is, is way more big area. So is, and is, is full with pavement, all this stuff. So it is, is, is very, is basically is, is because it's a bigger space. And now I have fourteen trucks. So that's why I, I had to move because I, I get more trucks.
Okay.
All right. Um, are there any members of the public that have any questions or comments on this application? Any members of the public? All right. If not, um, back to the commission and the applicant. I guess the, the one question I had was whether we wanted to continue any of the conditions from the prior approval. You know, such as no vehicle repair or maintenance, no view, vehicle fueling, application valid for one year. Um, or, or anything else that is relevant to this minor or reduced application. Do you have any thoughts on that, Denise?
It's, this isn't a reduced application. We're just extending it, right? So we just extend it.
It's a reduced version of it. So no.
No, no, he's asking, but we're not, he, he's not asking for reduced version, is he? He, he just mentioned he's going to reduce it, but why do we even bother? Just extend it.
So in terms of the approval, um, you know, if you prefer, I would continue those nine conditions, except I would modify number three to say maximum one box truck. Um, and then, you know, depending on, um, I would eliminate condition number nine, the storage shed. Um, and then depending on, uh, the feeling of the commission in terms of, um, whether or not they want the approval to be valid for one year. Um, that, that's really the only other one in question.
I think my opinion on that is to eliminate nine and seven. And then if he wants to bring more than the one truck that we're going to approve today, then he comes back.
Uh, Ryan, I would also think that we should, you know, he's come back. We've had no, Denise, there's been no complaints or anything of his.
There's been no complaints.
So I think, you know, the guy's running a business, it's time, it's money for him. I think, you know, being reasonable, he's been a good citizen and he has reduced his use dramatically. I think, I think a two or three year would be reasonable for this guy to make him come back. Is, I think three years is very reasonable.
Make, make it three, Jim, because I agree with you that we don't need to have him coming back here every.
Yeah, it, it, you know, and, and then, um, exactly. And I'd be happy if the guy comes back and wants to park more trucks because business is good. So.
Exactly. I'm, I'm, I'm actually in favor of what, what Ryan said. He's only got one truck. Why, why do we want to put any time on it? If, if he's going to expand operations at any time, uh, he's got to come back to us anyways and we'll just reevaluate. I'm, I'm in favor of no time limit in one truck. I think you said nine and seven, right? To be removed. Yeah, I'm, I'm unfair of that. I think that's the right way to do this.
I think you're right.
Is this, okay.
Good point.
Is the storage shed part of this application?
No, no.
All right, then we can take eight out then too, right?
That's right, Rich.
Well, I mean, the storage shed is still there.
No, 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 no. Actually I never used it.
Oh, it was never there? So that's the seven by seven storage shed is basically, okay.
Yes, I, I never, I never used, used the shed.
All right. I have no problem. If you want to go, uh, unlimited, you know, no time limit or five years, whichever the commission wants to do on for.
No, no time limit, yeah.
Okay, fine, George.
George, shut up.
If you want to make a motion, I'll, uh,
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, excuse me, have. The hearing first.
Yeah, we have a lot of.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Make a motion to.
Uh, wait, hold on, John. The applicant has a question.
Yes, please. I have a question just in case because now the market is so hard to find another, uh, another street truck. But, uh, because it's expensive and because basically it's, it's very difficult to find a, a good truck. Because the chips, because the shortage, all that stuff. But may, uh, if I can get another truck, so I need to do this, this request again, the applicant again. Or maybe I can, I can, it's not now because I can find anything. I was looking for another truck, but it's, it's very difficult. But maybe in a month or two months or three months, I, if I get one, uh, should I do the process now? Or maybe I can get a, I don't know, if I can get a approval at least for three.
John, you can, you would have to seek a modification to this application. Um, and provide us the specs for that specific vehicle. Um, but what I can, um, add as part of the previous conditions is that if you have to come before the commission, if the commission is favorable, um, we can waive the fees for the application.
Okay.
That sounds good to me, Denise.
Yeah.
Sounds reasonable. I understand his, uh, struggle trying to find equipment.
Hey, right, right now the, the list, number three says he can have ten trucks. We want to take that out?
Yeah, yeah.
What for? Why, why would we take it out?
It's going to say, it's going to say one unlimited time. That's, that's the compromise.
So maybe we can comp right and say three unlimited time. I'm beginning, the guy, he's never been a hassle. So you say three unlimited time. That's, then it's not.
Well.
I mean, three's never been an issue. I mean, I'm, I'm with you, but it's not been an issue. So, you know.
But they'd have to be the same, they'd have to be the same trucks.
Yeah, whatever. My point is the guy gets a good deal on a truck. He needs a place to park it for a while and we can't let him park it there.
I think if you, I think if you give him up to a twenty-six foot box truck, uh, Dave, that's fine. So the guy comes with a sixteen foot of Zuzu. It's not a problem. It's twenty-six foot is pretty much an industry standard.
So.
Cause you know.
Yeah, I mean, in the.
But I'm with you, but we're looking to change three to one. That's all.
Right, I'm with you, Dave.
Three to one.
Dave, I'm, I'm for you on that. And it sounds reasonable because the guy, he's got to snap a truck when he can get it. He cannot wait. He's got to buy it as soon as he sees he's got to pull the trigger.
Yeah. So I was saying, why don't we just change item three to like maximum of three trucks? Give the guy a break, you know, so, you know, it's not that big a deal.
Well, it's, it, it, it's not because this application is not for a renewal of the prior application. It's an application for a new approval for one truck. So we can't change something.
That's, that's, that's not what Denise said. She said it was, it was to just extend it. That's how we started.
I mean, the, the trigger for them submitting the application was that their previous application had expired.
Right. So we can just extend it. That's the point. But nobody, but we want to give them a longer extension. So let's just change item three to like maximum of three trucks and get rid of nine and eight, I guess. Then go on, let them go on forever. Well, five years, something like that. Yeah.
I, I, I think we're trying.
Application, however, was advertised specifically for one box truck, which is the request the applicant made.
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
At least he knows our sense of it now.
And it, and it was not an application to extend the prior approval. Which was in a different place.
Okay.
At least he knows when he comes back, he'll get his three trucks if he needs them.
I got you, Rich. You're, you're very clear. Thank you. Appreciate it.
What, what I understood from this applicant is that he's looking for one right now, but he wants to make it easy to get more. And, and I think we have done that, right? We, we told him that there's no fee if he comes back. And we've given him no timeframe. So we're making it easy for him.
Yeah, yeah. At least he knows where we're coming from.
Yeah, I think so.
Exactly.
All right.
I, I'd like to make a motion to close the, the public hearing.
Uh, second by George.
All right. Motion, motion by Peter, second by Jim and George to, uh, close the public hearing. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I ma, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve of three oh one one two two Z JPL Transportation.
I'll, I'll second your motion, George, but I want to make sure we get the conditions correct here, right? So, uh, we're going to drop items, uh.
Let's do them new. Let's do them new because it's a new.
Okay.
Application.
So, so it would be, uh, condition one would stay, right? No vehicle repair, uh, no Jake break, uh, maximum of one truck permitted on site. Uh, no trailers permitted on site. Uh, fuel split management protocol to be in place. Uh, no vehicle fueling allowed between the hours of eight and seven AM. And that's it.
I would also just add that the application fee will be waived if the applicant seeks a modification.
Yeah, good point. Forgot that. I agree.
And do we have to, do we have to explicitly say that there's no time limit or is it implied?
It's implied.
Implicit. I would also say that the, the one truck is the up to twenty-six foot box truck that he's.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. Item three.
That work for you, George?
Yes. Okay, here, second, no, no.
Yep. All right. Any further discussion? And I guess, just so that we are clear on who's voting. Um, what were there? Eight regular members and three alternates?
Um, I screwed that up, didn't I?
Well, we'll live. Um, for this one.
It's gonna look good. It's gonna look good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, really. This is going on your permanent record, Ryan.
Hmm.
Um.
Put him on double signature invasion.
Yeah, well, I will, um, I'll see, uh, alternate when Rooney on this application since he made the motion or seconded it. Um, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item, application.
Thank you so much.
Three point four. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, item three point four, public hearing, three oh one two dash twenty-two Z. Leonardo Gugliotti seeking special permit in accordance with section five six. Uh, exceptions for business redevelopment of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for a change of use from retail to a cosmetology school at six fifty-seven, uh, Silvestine Highway. And there's someone here on behalf of the applicant who would like to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, you know, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer representing the applicant owner. From the firm of Alter and Pearson and Glassonberry. Also speaking on behalf of the applicant tonight will be Kevin Johnson from Close Jensen and Miller. Uh, representatives of the applicant are also, uh, on this, um, virtual meeting and they may respond to questions if there are some that are operational in nature. As the call for the public hearing indicates, this is an application made under section five point six of your regulations for the renovation of the building at six fifty-seven Silvestine Highway, uh, located in the town center zone. Um, as an educational institution, it is a permitted use by special permit in the zone. Um, we did already file with Denise's office, uh, evidence of the mail notice. Um, we did already file with Denise's office uh evidence of the mail notice as required, and also I will represent to the commission that sign was properly posted at the property for the appropriate period. Um, can Kevin have uh the opportunity to put some materials up on the screen?
Yes, you are able to share.
Thank you, Denise.
Okay, good.
Says uh disabled.
Yeah, I don't have any authority here.
Yeah. Here we go.
This uh site, for those of you who've been around Weathersfield uh for a time, will recall that it was uh first a Pelton Drug and then uh Rite Aid Drug Store Pharmacy. Uh, this is a photo that uh we had from some archives, just to remind people of uh the the positioning and the appearance of uh the building as it was a Rite Aid pharmacy latest. Um, so you know, the Rite Aid pharmacy has been closed for some time. Uh, you can go to the next one, Kevin, please. This is a view of the building as it exists today, uh taken from, obviously, from the Silvestine Highway. Um, the site has been uh really fully paved, as you can see, um about eighty-three percent of the site is impervious at the present time. Under your town center regulation, um it is allowed up to a hundred percent impervious. Um, a- and I I would have to say that this lot represents uh about the most paving of any property that uh you could imagine along the Silvestine Highway. Um. Kevin will go over the changes to the landscape plan uh that have been made, which uh decreases the impervious surface by uh some amount of landscaping, and he'll he'll review that with you shortly. The lot um was created by dividing off from uh the parcel immediately to the south. And it now consists of about two point three acres or a hundred thousand two hundred and nine square feet would be the parcel on the right, as as you're looking at the the existing conditions plan. Um, it has two hundred and seventy-seven feet of frontage on the Silvestine Highway. The Gugliotti family proposes to do a complete redevelopment of the existing building um to make it into a facility for uh its business, the International Institute of Cosmetology. Um. That business is currently located uh across on the other side of the Silvestine Highway at six thirty-two uh and occupies about sixty-nine hundred square feet in that facility. Uh, if this application is approved, the uh Gugliotti family will be able to make use of approximately fourteen thousand square feet, doubling uh the space that they currently have avail available. But not only will it be much larger space, it'll be uh more completely developed to be uh more efficient so that students can be uh trained and dealt with in a much more efficient way. Um, right now, the maximum number of students that uh they can have in their current facility is about seventy-five. Uh, with this facility, they'll be able to handle ninety students at any one session, uh greatly enhancing their ability to provide uh this opportunity to their students. Um, for those of you who don't know what cosmetology is, it has to do with the training of uh people to be professionals in areas of hairdressing, aesthetic, or skincare, makeup and eyelash uh treatments as well as barbering. Um, Mr. Gugliotti Senior opened the institute in two thousand and two with six students. And since then, it's grown to in its current location, taking over spaces as they became available. Um. And and now is able to service uh up to seventy-five students with some staggered classes. The concept for uh the institute is to be able to offer uh greater opportunities for its students in particular in light of what we've been through for the last two years. Uh, there's a need to have greater space between students and a greater uh separation of uh areas for training. And so the new facility is critical for them in that regard, as well as being able to handle the number of students who seek uh to use their their training opportunities. There are no wet ones on the site or related to the site. And uh the plan was uh presented to Drac uh and was endorsed by uh the committee uh after its review. Um. The Gugliotti family, as you'll see in in Kevin's presentation, has made, put a great emphasis on upgrading the appearance of the building and and turning it into uh a real opportunity for upgrade uh on the Silvestine Highway. Uh, they do intend to make use of the town's facade grant program uh to help underwrite uh the cost. Uh, as you can see, when when Kevin goes through the architecture, that they've made a real commitment to tremendously enhancing uh this property. Family has made a major financial commitment to the site and to improving and expanding its business. Um, it represents an opportunity for a local business, which has been successful, to continue to grow and to stay in Weathersfield uh as a real asset on on the Silvestine Highway. Um, we are still part of an integrated parcel. Uh, the piece to the south uh shares uh some declarations and uh connections, physical connections, as well as reciprocal easements uh for ingress egress and some cross parking. And so that had to be taken into account uh as Close Jensen and Miller developed its plan. Um, what Kevin will do is go through uh the site plan uh for you in greater detail. He'll review the landscaping and building plans and speak to uh some of the concerns that were raised by staff in their memos uh as he makes his presentation. And then we'll come back and review some of the outstanding items uh to conclude our presentation. So Kevin, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alter, uh for the record, Kevin Johnson, Close Jensen and Miller. Uh, just a quick orientation uh with the site plan. Uh, again, I think you're all familiar uh with this plan. Uh, we we appear before you uh just about a year ago or so for a re-subdivision. Uh, so this parcel uh is located at the northwest quadrant of uh Wells Road and Silvestine Highway. Wells Road being to the left, Silvestine Highway being to the bottom of the sheet. Uh, direction north is to the right. Uh, two access points to the site uh from Silvestine Highway uh as Attorney Alter uh mentioned. Um. This site does share access and parking, and there are cross parking uh agreements and so forth uh with the abutting parcel to the south, uh number six seventy-five, six eighty-seven, uh Silvestine Highway. Uh, so I'm just gonna shift the next sheet. So, um, we we did meet uh virtually with staff. Uh, they did ask for some uh improvements to the site. Uh, as Attorney Alter mentioned, uh this is in a town center zone, uh hundred percent impervious. Uh, coverage is allowed. Um, staff did ask for us to increase, uh provide some landscaping. Uh, we did incorporate uh two landscaped islands on the north side of the building. Uh, currently, that one is just paved. Uh, we also tried to redefine uh the 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 edge treatment uh along the north property line. Uh, currently, uh there's uh the edge of the paving is almost coincident with the abutting uh property, uh which is Savage Road Park owned by the town of Weathersfield. Uh, what we tried to do was uh to put a nice soft radius in there, picking up on the existing driveway apron that's there at the Silvestine and and basically directing the traffic, uh you know, from front to rear uh thirty-foot wide uh aisle, uh and it resulted in uh increasing the green space. Uh, there is an existing uh multi-stem tree uh uh that we're proposing to preserve. Uh, so this additional green will hopefully help uh that tree as well. Um. We did uh re-stripe uh by cutting in these landscaped islands. Uh, we did lose a couple parking spaces. Uh, we did re-stripe across the frontage. We relocated handicap parking from the two sides of the building to the front. Uh, put some crosswalks in there uh and included the appropriate number of handicap spaces as well. Uh, in the rear of the property, uh there are existing dumpsters currently. Uh, there's no screening around those dumpsters. Uh, we did propose to include a dumpster enclosure uh around that. Um. In terms of parking uh onsite today, uh I believe there's a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. Uh, as Attorney Walter mentioned, uh the school has grown over the last twenty years or so. Uh that it it is anticipated it's going to grow uh some more. Uh, the Gugliottis uh anticipate ninety students, ten staff, uh and ten clients at any one time, which requires a hundred and ten uh parking spaces. Um, there's also uh as part of the cross parking uh agreement with the abutting property, um there there are six uh that they are obligated to share with next door. So there's a total parking requirement of a hundred and sixteen uh parking spaces. Uh, and and that's what uh we're proposing. So one more than what's existing. Um, again, by zoning, uh th- there is no uh requirement in the regulations for the required amount of parking for a school. Uh, that's to be determined by the commission. I believe it was in the staff memo. Um, you know, reference was made to the the recent application for uh Porter and Chester uh at twelve-ten Silvestine Highway. Similar uh condition. I'm gonna move on to the architectural plan. Uh, not an architect, but I'll do my best to describe this and uh so as you can see, uh you know, from the photo that was on the screen earlier, uh to what's being proposed is a drastic difference. Um. Basically, the entire uh front facade is going to be redone. Uh. A whole new treatment, uh that the existing glass is gonna be retained. They're gonna redo the aluminum framework, uh colorize that. Uh, they're incorporating uh prefabricated aluminum panels uh made to mimic redwood. Uh. There's new canopies. Uh, the existing canopy is gonna be brought, you know, taken down. Uh basically, there's two separate canopies. There's uh where the cursor is right now uh is one unit, and then the other is on the right. Uh, there's gonna be new doors installed. Uh, doorways basically remain in the center of the building. Uh. And there is signage proposed uh for the top of uh basically a extension uh to the parapet. Um, so moving on, this is the floor plan. Uh, again, the bottom of the screen is is the parking area, uh the main door in the center. Uh, come into a reception lobby area, uh classrooms off to the right, uh studios and other rooms uh to the left. Uh. Exit doors on either side will remain. Um, as Attorney Alter mentioned, um this plan was brought uh before Drac and and received endorsement from Drac. Moving on, these are some construction details, some elements uh developed by the architects. Um, not gonna get too deep into that, but that was included in the application uh package. And it does, you know, refer to the wood cloud overhang, aluminum canopy, and details, uh prefabricated aluminum uh panels and so forth. Uh, moving on. Uh, actually, I I uh think I skipped a sheet. Um, actually, there was a letter. Uh, sorry about that. There was a letter included with your uh information package. Um. You uh are familiar with uh my my request for waivers for many sites uh over the years. Um, I I didn't structure this as a waiver letter. Um, basically, it's more of a statement. Um, again, because the regulations do allow for up to a hundred percent impervious coverage. Um, basically, what this letter is, is a uh you know, a statement of uh or a summary of the landscape requirements uh and what was provided. And again, it wasn't meant to be a waiver request. Uh, I I could go through if you want me to go through each item. Um, I don't know if you want to take that time. Um, basically, we are reducing the impervious uh coverage and increasing the pervious um adding trees uh and such. So. Now, moving on, um. So we received uh staff comments uh yesterday uh from engineering and planning. Um, we did try to incorporate those comments on a plan. Uh, unfortunately, we did not have time to resubmit to staff, so they have not seen this plan. Um. We tried to be responsive. Um. Basically, uh again, those two islands on the north side of the building will remain. Uh, we did add two more islands in the front as requested. Uh, they'll be uh bituminous curved islands, uh two trees in each island. Uh, we did narrow up uh one of the drive aisles in the front. It was also requested by staff to uh try and increase the green space in the front uh between that drive aisle and the property line. Uh, there was also a request uh to include uh some LID features on site. Uh, I believe it was the town engineer's comment that suggested perhaps some type of infiltration along the frontage. Uh, what we did was to create about a three-foot wide, three-foot deep uh trench with stone, uh basically, the front of that site. I'm 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 not prepared to say that the entire front of the site will drain there. Uh, part of the site drains to the sides of the building. Uh, there is drainage uh in the rear of the site, and then it's the pipe system that comes out to the Silvestine. But there is at least a portion of that parking area, which is going to drain towards that uh proposed infiltration trench. Um. There was a request um for a detail to be added to the plans for the dumpster enclosure. Uh, we included that on the plan. I'll get to that in a minute. Uh, that's right there, and then that's a detail for the infiltration trench as well. Uh, we did incorporate uh corrections to some notations on the plan. Um, minor minor things, uh references to the tax map, uh adding uh bituminous concrete labels, uh taking uh a label off for a proposed property line, which was a carryover from last year. Um. The Gugliottis uh have authorized us to at least do some survey to confirm uh spot grades and uh topographic grades. Uh, that was another request by staff. Um. There was a request also by staff, by the town engineer. Um, the northerly driveway that I mentioned where we. Um the northerly driveway that I mentioned where we created that soft radius to direct the traffic to the rear and increased that and and create that green space. Uh he he was asking uh for us to leave a portion, if we understood the comment right, leave a portion of that pavement so that you can come straight in and then um create some type of angled uh transition, uh I guess to be determined. Again, we didn't have sufficient time to reach out to him. Um we feel what we're proposing is a better solution. We feel it channels the traffic. It's more defined. Uh does add more green space. Uh if we were going to leave that paving uh on that north property line, again, it, as I mentioned, it's basically coincident with that north property line. Um so then we may not have the five foot landscape minimum uh by zoning. So we we just feel, I mean, again, we'd be happy to uh discuss uh with Mr. Gregor. Um but we just feel that this is more defining and a and a better uh alignment. Uh it was also uh requested, suggested uh that we look at narrowing some of the other uh drive aisles onsite. Uh some of those are thirty feet. Uh some might be in the rear and excess of thirty feet. I think the reason it's the width that it is, is the former use of that building and for delivery vehicles and service area to the rear. Um we're we're not looking to rebuild this entire parking lot. Um I think narrowing some of those drive aisles would often um, you know, have to look at circulation for fire apparatus and so forth to make sure that's sufficient. Um with the drive aisles we do have today, we did put uh turning templates on there um in an SU thirty. Uh basically, an equivalent to a fire truck can make it around those corners. Um the fire marshal did review the plans uh for fire access and so forth. Um and he did not have any uh comments. Um so I think at this point, um that summarizes my comments at this point, and I'll turn it back to Attorney Alter for some further discussion.
Yeah, Kevin, could I ask you one quick question first?
Sure.
Um no, I think I I like this, but I I just wanted to be sure that I understood the conversation about the north driveway. And what what the town engineer was looking for that differs from what you have shown here. Was it basically to remove the the green space so that people could go straight in the driveway there?
I I believe by the comment, um that that's what he was requesting.
Okay. I mean, the only people that go in there are police cars and people cutting the corner at the light.
I was just thinking that maybe it's like the EMS and police parking that he was concerned with.
Uh I I I can read the comment. Um the limited angle of proposed pavement removal near the northern driveway entrance may be difficult for vehicles to navigate. Therefore, I recommend retaining more of the pavement along the northerly property line to allow vehicles to drive straight into the site with a transition to a narrower aisle width located further to the west. The loss in new pervious surface in this area can be replaced elsewhere on the site as noted above. And that references perhaps narrowing of aisles elsewhere on the property. So a- again, it's not um you know, explicit, you know, a length of straight in that he's looking for pavement retainage. Um but again, we just felt that based on the angle of that driveway apron uh that exists right there, that the angle of that, this the extension, the soft radius that we created basically channels vehicles down that drive aisle towards the rear of the property or to make a left into the parking in the front. We we just felt that coming straight in and then some type of transition might be more confusing for, you know, vehicular traffic. But a- again, um you know, we're we didn't uh have time today to reach out to Mr. Gregor. We we tried to revise plans as much as we could and uh you know, for this hearing this evening, incorporate as much as possible. But again, we just think what we proposed originally is a better solution.
I can see, I I see your point about maybe a a southbound vehicle turning right into there, but a northbound vehicle turning left into there has to take, you know, a a hundred degree turn in order to get in onto that bearing. So I may maybe that's maybe that's something he's looking into is is both directions where if somebody misses that first driveway, sometimes that queue gets so long that you have to go to the next one to the north. Um so I wonder if maybe he's, maybe he's thinking of it from the perspective of a northbound vehicle turning left, especially like an SU three uh SU thirty or you know, box truck, some similar to that.
Right, well, a- again.
No, it's, but it's uh.
Right.
Also, okay. Yep, the um I I I did wanna just remind the commission that this is an application under section five point six, um which offers the commission a a great deal more flexibility in terms of the manner in which it uh applies its regulations. The the regulation says that um it, the commission can uh or does not necessarily have to require that it comply with the strict application of regulations. Um provided certain standards are met, and and I think in this case, uh those standards are met so that um to Kevin's point of his extensive analysis of why uh we're just not able to meet all of the requirements that we could if if this were a brand new development on a on a bare piece of property. Um we think we've come a long way toward addressing the staff's issues. Uh really, there were only two that we weren't able to accommodate. One is this turning radius and frankly, um I guess reasonable minds can disagree and uh i- it may be one that um the commission could simply say that uh you know, if you saw fit to approve this application that uh the applicant and the town engineer meet to resolve any issues on that that access driveway. The the more significant request that we just simply can't meet is the reducing the width of the drive aisles. Um the parking lot is not in terrible shape and uh to do, to undertake what is requested really would mean redoing the entire parking lot. Um which is a lot of blacktop and a lot of uh site work uh that the Google Adis really are not in a position to undertake. Um the thirty, the the drive aisles as they exist have been on the site since before Pelton Drug was there and uh really don't present any issues. And we think that uh the plan that you have before you goes a long way towards creating some modest green space where none exists now. Uh and we would ask that the commission recognize the the lengths to which the Google Adi family has gone to improve this site and not uh impose the requirement of reducing the widths of those those drive aisles. It would make uh this project uh significantly more difficult on a financial basis uh for the Google Adi family to undertake. Um a- and it would cause them uh significant uh issues uh in terms of being able to go forward. So we would ask that you not uh consider that as a condition of approval. The um two other matters, Kevin, could you go back to the architectural slide for a minute? The um, thank you. The the signage on the building, um your your planning consultant points out in his memo that your sign regulation um does not permit rooftop signs. And um we agree that that's what the regulation says. Um he's a hundred percent correct when he says that. Our uh our consultants have indicated that because this is not um or or is part of the parapet, they don't consider it to be a rooftop sign. And I think that that's a a matter that we don't have to uh resolve. Um under your sign regulation, under section five point three point R, if I have it right, I think I do, subsection two. The commission has authority to uh grant increases or changes to uh the requirements of the sign regulation. If they find that the sign meets the overall intent and purpose of the sign regulations and and is still not in strict compliance with the regulation of this chapter, you still have authority to approve it if you think it would result in a superior design for the overall site in terms of the quality of materials, lighting, and overall coordination of the design of the sign on the site. A- and we think that um the presentation that you see and the significant upgrades to the building make a sign like this appropriate. Um it's uh it it's situated so that it's visible from the Silas Dean Highway. Um it it's the only signage that we proposed for the building. There is a logo in the front corner that qualifies as a sign and we certainly acknowledge that. But that's the uh institute's logo uh embossed onto the panels that are uh set on the building. So we believe that the commission can approve the sign. We don't have to get into a discussion as to whether or not it's a rooftop sign or a a parapet sign or or whatever it is. If you think that it's suitable for the building as you see it, uh then I think you have the authority under section R of your sign regulations to approve it uh as part of this special permit. A- and we would ask you to do that. Um it's obvious that the Google Adi family has gone to a lot of uh trouble and uh expense to have architects take uh a building that is is, I think we can all agree, very tired uh and turn it into something that has a much more significant presence on the Silas Dean Highway with the addition of uh the islands in the front, which we think are a good addition. Um the Google Adis agreed to that uh when they were advised of it between uh yesterday and today uh as well as the islands on the north side. Uh there's a lot more landscaping on the site than has ever existed, at least in my memory of um this area on the Silas Dean Highway. Um finally, uh one of the responsibilities of the commission is to make sure that the special permit criteria under section eight of your regulations is satisfied. I'll go through those very briefly. Uh first one is that this is a suitable location. Um obviously, well, perhaps not obviously, but at least in our opinion, uh this is a perfect location for the growth of the institute uh moving across the street. Uh obviously, it's been on the other side of the Silas Dean for over twenty years uh and has demonstrated that it can be successful in this location. Um neighborhood compatibility, uh again, w- we have proof that it's compatible with with the rest of the commercial activities on the Silas Dean Highway. Its hours of operation are uh spelled out in a communication from Mr. Google Adi. They do not operate on weekends so that uh that residential area to the north and and west of of our site uh is not gonna have a lot of activity either late at night or on the weekends. Um so we think it's highly compatible. We presented you with a significant upgrade and uh change in the in the structure and landscaping on the site from what is currently there. We showed you what it looks like currently. Uh we have suitable access. Whether or not we need to widen out the throat of uh the access on the north driveway is is perhaps a matter to be determined. Uh we have a hundred and sixteen parking spaces, which meets our requirements of a hundred and ten spaces plus meets the obligation of the cross parking easement for the property to the south. Overall circulation continues to be good. Um those of you who are aware of this, and someone referenced the fact that there are people who use this as a cut through to avoid the light uh at the Wells Road intersection. Um know that there is connectivity among the internal driveways for this property and the properties to the south so that that overall circulation will continue to be uh well functioning. We have public water, public sewer. Uh Kevin has described an enhancement to the stormwater drainage plan uh that we've been able to accommodate in terms of the engineer's request. There is no uh natural feature or disruption to the environment that would be caused by this development. Uh we think the environment is enhanced by the increased landscaping and the significant improvements to the building. Uh it is consistent with uh public health, safety, welfare, convenience. Uh I don't think there's any question that the value of this property is significantly enhanced by what the Google Adi family proposes to do. Um it is not in conflict with the purposes of your regulation or your plan of conservation and development in that an important element of your of your plan of conservation development is uh focus on the Silas Dean Highway and uh promoting and assisting local businesses uh as they grow and and continue to be successful. Uh all of those goals would be met uh by this proposal. Um we've talked about the signage. Uh as you can see from uh the the picture that we have, the elevation drawing that we have, there is underlighting uh on the canopy to light the front of the building. And for those of you who remember, the windows on the Pelton Drug or then the Rite Aid Drug were all blocked up at least um waist high, if not higher. The the lower half of all of those windows is blocked. Um all of that will be removed so that light from the inside of the property will spill out into the front of the building and make it a much more appealing uh facade to the Silas Dean Highway uh than currently exists. Um the uh proposal uh has appropriate handicap parking accessible to the front of the building. The entire building is handicap accessible um as it should be. Certainly enhances community development. Um there are no other uses like this uh on this part of the Silas Dean Highway. Uh a- and so it certainly doesn't duplicate any uh possible conflict or or create any conflicts with similar uses. And finally, um taking what is currently an empty unused building and turning it into something that will have activity and young people coming here to Weathersfield to be trained. Um i- is really an enhancement to the community, we think, and that uh because of its sort of business hours of operation would cause no disruption to any residential areas uh nearby. So that we think that all of the special permit criteria that you spell out in section eight are met uh by the proposal that you have before you. Uh Kevin and I are happy to answer any questions commissioners may have or respond to any comments from the public. And as I indicated, uh the Google Adis are available if there are operational questions that they might be able to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can we just stop uh screen sharing or?
Yes, yes, please. I mean, I guess if somebody comes back with a specific question, we can do it again, but at least.
Okay.
We can see who's here. Um anybody on the commission have any questions for uh the applicant or uh Kevin or Peter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman George, I do, couple.
George, George, go ahead.
Uh the roof sign, did uh Drack uh approve it? Didn't, in fact, did they look at the sole proposal? Design Review Committee.
The Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed the proposal, including the sign and endorsed it.
Just one point though, Peter, um in in their application. Uh they did not receive the specific dimensions of the proposal. Um so they, that will have to be reviewed by our zoning enforcement officer, as well as the issue of the interpretation of the roof sign.
I I and I.
I have a question, another question along that sign issue. Is there anywhere else on the Silas Dean, and maybe Denise can answer this too? Uh where a roof sign is is there and or permitted or recently approved by our commission? I mean, recent in the last twenty years, we'll say. Come on, Peter, you you know the town well enough.
George, you probably remember, didn't, that was a finest supermarket, right, George?
It was a grocery store when I taught junior high school at Silas Dean Junior High, that was a grocery store.
Yeah, it was a finest supermarket. It didn't have the letters on the roof.
We have a sign that that we have a that that picture shows some signs up on the top.
Yeah, I thought it said finest right on our roof.
I mean, because we had signs on the roof before, we should allow them to continue as an historic aspect to it.
Mr. Oikle, I'm not suggesting that we have any.
Can I talk? This is Carmelo Gugliari. That sign is not in the roof, it's in front of the building.
And why did you say it was on the roof, uh your?
Because you are talking about roof sign and that one is not.
Uh Denise, can we consider that a roof sign?
The our our planning consultant, Don Caruso, is interpreting that that is a roof sign. Um so it will have to be clarified uh the interpretation through the zoning enforcement officer if if there's a discrepancy.
That sign, that sign is taking part of the sign that was there before. Uh I don't know if you you saw in the first picture that uh Mister uh Mister Kevin was. In the in the screen where show there was a food marketing, it was there. And that is in the same level of the sign, it's not in the roof.
I I'm not taking issue with the sign personally. I think it's I accept, it's acceptable to me the way you presented it.
And and just to note, the the Design Review Commission was supportive of the proposal. Um you know, they did like the look of the sign, so you know, staff is not discouraging the applicant from. Uh moving forward with what they're proposing, we're just seeking clarification.
If if I might, um I don't think that the commission has to decide. Whether this is a roof sign or not. I think that you gave yourself. The ability to approve that sign as it presented without calling it a roof sign or a. A building sign under section R of your sign regulations where you're allowed to grant. Uh changes to the location, area, height, requirements o- of the sign, so.
So Peter, that is, that is correct. However, this. Application was not advertised to include the special permit request for the sign.
I, okay, I I think we're we're proceeding under a special permit. And and certainly the sign was was part of that app, has been part of the application. That will, it's up to the commission to.
Excuse me, I want to ask a question. This meeting is to give us solution or to give us a problem? Denise?
I'm just providing you the staff comments.
Mr. Gugliotti, we.
We are in support of the proposal.
Mr. Gugliotti, we need to hear from the commission, okay?
Thank you.
A lot of questions, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Let's see, drainage, just these are a couple of quick questions here. Uh the drainage, um. Does the town engineer indicated any problems with the runoff here or anything like that? Um Kevin, uh he seems to always get concerned these days with. The federal requirements about uh off-site drainage on commercial sites.
Mr. Chairman, if if I could answer part of that, because this is the redevelopment of a building on an existing site. The the very strict requirements of MS four are are not so applicable.
Applicable?
And.
Really?
And that most of the drainage is already existing on the site, Kevin, maybe you could speak to that and walk us through it.
Yeah, he should, because we've run into issues on the Berlin Turnpike on much smaller site. Where off-site drainage was an issue over there, so that's why I was wondering, but go ahead.
That was an undeveloped site.
For the record, Kevin Johnson, um so again, as I, when when I was doing my presentation, I mentioned. That there is an existing drainage system, uh several catch basins, they're predominantly around the rear and the south side of the building. Uh and they're connected and they come out to the Silas Dean. Um he he did not uh. You know, require any uh you know, further treatment of that. Um basically, he was looking for, you know, as he mentioned in his memo, some. You know, LID uh features. Um he he did mention uh possibly incorporating. What we did include along that front uh landscape strip. Um but other than that, uh there was no uh you know, other specific comments about drainage. Uh there was. The comment from planning uh regarding uh a topographic and and drainage plan. Um and and as I mentioned, the Gugliattis have agreed uh for us to at least do. You know, a a topographic survey to establish uh you know, spot shots to confirm grades and so forth.
And in other words, he thinks the additional. And uh green areas that you've put in, islands and everything else along the side and so forth. Are uh aren't an an improvement over what exists.
Oh definitely. I mean, we're reducing the impervious coverage. We're increasing pervious green space by.
Okay.
Uh somewhere, I forget the exact number, I want to say it's between three and four percent additional green space on site, so. I mean, we're we're not, we're we're not adding to the building footprint, we're not enlarging it, um we're not expanding. The bituminous area, we're reducing it.
Okay, Kevin, I I I I can add at this point a little bit, but I I thought maybe. There would be more green added to this site, but than you have, but. Um I would probably almost be happier than what I see or can be acceptable of it. Now, the only other thing is when I go around that site. Over the years, I've noticed a big concrete block on the north side. And a couple of other oddball things hanging out on that site, and I assume the landscaping. On those sides will be taking care of those things and removing them and improving it. The fencing up front seems to be pretty solid and looks intact to me, but of course, it's hard to tell on some of that kind of thing. But otherwise, yeah, that those are my uh, I think my concerns at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thank you, George. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant or their representatives?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Pete. I'd like to address a couple of points, if I may.
Sure.
Uh let me first start by saying I think this is a great improvement that uh uh they're doing to this site and. I I applaud it, frankly. I mean, uh moving their operation across the street. Uh changing the building, the way they're doing it, adding the green space, uh I I think is great. So I I have no issues with any of that, and as I said, I think um the applicant is doing a great job with that. Uh the one thing that's still unclear to me, uh Peter, maybe I'll go back to you or Kevin. Uh this debate you guys are having in that driveway, should it be curved, should it be straight? Is it safe? Is it unsafe? Uh as you guys know, I'm an engineer and the thing that uh. Always concerns me is safety. I used to be a nuclear engineer, so you got to worry about safety. Uh and if you're, if you're, I think uh someone mentioned, if you're going north. And then you try to go into that uh drive with that curve, does that become a little bit awkward and unsafe? Is that what our engineer is really worried about? If he is, you know, I'll let you guys address that. If he is. I don't see a big deal in changing that. I mean, it's almost a philosophical debate. Uh why are you guys so reluctant to to make that change?
No, I I I think I mentioned in my presentation, would would be happy to, you know, to discuss with Mr. Gregor. Um we we just felt the solution we had proposed, um you know, created the maximum green and and directed. The the traffic, uh you know, in a smooth flow down that drive aisle, that northerly drive aisle. I mean, we'd be happy to modify it. Um we we just felt that leaving. Uh the paving, uh you you know, straight in and and then a transition was just more awkward. Than a definitive soft curve directing the traffic.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a matter of aesthetics, I would agree with you. If it's a matter of safety concerns, I think you you ought to discuss it with the town engineer.
Oh, absolutely. No, I I I said in my presentation, we'd be happy to. It's just, we got the comments y- yesterday and. Uh did our best to address everything today for for this meeting, so I I'm not saying we're we're opposed to changing it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Tom.
Um while I'm, I tend to be uh impressed and favorably disposed to the applicant's application on this. I'm 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 a bit uh confused or uncertain with regards to. The uh level of authority that the commission has with regards to this application. It is a an application for a special use permit. Uh and uh. And my my main concern with, you know, this this overall development is the uh. Uh the amount of the existing impervious, impervious coverage of the of the entire lot. Uh I'm not sure what the level of discretion or or authority. The commission would have in imposing uh conditions as it relates to uh the landscaping requirements. Obviously, the applicant's uh letter of January thirty first, that is, the letter from Close Jensen and Miller. Uh signed by Mr. Johnson uh indicates that um uh the this current. Uh uh level of imperviousness on the site does not comply with current landscaping uh regulations. But he he indicates or implies that uh uh. That since the the current uh situation on the site. As it relates to landscaping and the degree of impervious coverage uh was performed long before. The uh current uh landscaping regulations um. That uh. That that the site does not need to conform to the uh the current landscaping uh regulations. I'm, I just want to know what the, you know, what kinds of uh authority the commissioner would have. In imposing landscaping requirements to conform to the uh current regulations. Uh that the committee could uh could exercise, and I guess this is more a question for Denise. Uh the Town Planner's Office to to respond to, but I'd also uh. Uh appreciate any comments that uh Mr. Alter or Mr. Johnson might uh. Uh uh might pose in in response to my query here.
If you want, I can respond, Mr. Roberts.
Sure, go ahead.
This is an application under section five point six of your regulations. Which is a different sort of application than a direct special permit application that you might get. For a vacant property. Um a- and what it, what it speaks to i- is is Mr. Dean is is really the purpose and intent. Is to permit the redevelopment or renovation. We fall under the renovation category of properties in business zones. When such improvements will result, in the sole opinion of the commission, in functional and aesthetic improvements. In the overall character of the property, the neighborhood, and the community. Renovation means changes to a site that do not involve the demolition of buildings or the construction of new or replacement buildings. But may include structural alterations such as facade replacement, restoration, relocation of doorways. Windows, reconstruction of parking areas, and similar changes. The commission may, where deemed appropriate in the sole judgment of the commission, allow redevelopment or renovation of property. In a business zone in a manner that does not comply with the strict application of these regulations. By modifying one or more of the requirements of the regulations. As will result in substantial functional and aesthetic improvements. In the overall character of the property, the neighborhood and the community, including building design, site design, building landscaping. Perimeter landscaping, parking area landscaping, signage, similar attributes. Provide for the appropriate use of the land in the neighborhood, provide for the orderly development of the land in the neighborhood. Protect the public health and safety and otherwise further further purposes of this section and these regulations. This section, this five point six section of your regulations, gives you the authority to. Recognize that sites that are to be renovated, as this one is, can't meet. The strict application of your regulations that you could demand on a blank slate. We don't have a blank slate. And um that's why I think you adopted this regulation, was to give you the flexibility to do that. So that's my explanation.
Kind of in response to uh to to the uh to the the obverse of what. Uh uh Mr. Alter indicated, i- it it seems to me that uh. Then the committee ultimately would have the authority to uh uh. Uh to uh require adherence to uh the most current version of. Uh say, the landscaping regulations. I'm just, I'm just looking at at uh empowerment here. I'm not looking at in terms of imposing requirements or not imposing requirements. Uh but uh just what the level of discretion that the committee or that the commission has. Uh with regards to applications such as this or sites uh similar to this. Uh could I have a response uh from uh uh from our Town Planner's Office on this?
Sure, so Tom, um. Section five point four of our regulations, um which refers to impervious coverage. Um in the town center zone, um it allows for the commission to approve up to one hundred percent. Impervious coverage. This doesn't mean that it's inherently um. Allowable, it's it's by commission approval. Um we have asked the applicant to go through the. Landscaping requirements uh to demonstrate and ask for waivers where they can't comply. We recognize that the proposal is an improvement to the existing conditions and did not anticipate that they would be able to meet the current requirements. We just wanted them to go through the demonstration.
Would you would you concur in in a, an evaluation of the January 31 letter from Close Jensen Miller? That, that, that much of the, the aspects of the letter really amounts to a request for waivers of landscaping requirements, such as on page one of the letter at the bottom of the page, relating to section 6.1D. It ends with the landscape area proposed 19.2%, which is down from the 25% requirement of the Oh, the, the, one could, one could interpret that to mean that they requesting a waiver of the requirements from 25% down to 19.2%.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So it's, it, what we're talking about is, is the commission has discretion here.
You do have the authority to approve that request.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant or their team? I guess I, I just wanna comment that I appreciate your willingness to discuss with the town engineers comment on the northerly driveway. Appreciate and understand the difficulty that would be posed by, you know, addressing some of the other comments such as the, you know, the width of the drive aisles. You know, if just, just to put this kind of in, into a context, I mean, if, if they were coming here looking to put in a porch and patio store, we wouldn't be having any of this conversation. You know, if they wanted to keep the same kind of cream colored rose stucco facade with the same sign on the front of it that they're proposing to have, you know, as part of the parapet, we wouldn't be having any of these conversations. So you know, it, it's solely because they want to move their business across the road and expand it that we're, you know, kind of perseverating over, you know, shortcomings in a fully developed site that has been kind of underutilized for a number of years now. And you know, I remember when I first got on the commission back in the 1800s, Commissioner Scott Murphy was here and he'd quite often comment something, something along the lines of, you know, we don't want to have the perfect be the enemy of the good. You know, that I, I think this, you know, this proposal is, is good from both a, a redevelopment and adaptive reuse and, and economic development perspective. You know, they're adding green space within the parking lots. They're, you know, they're upgrading the, the appearance of the building. They're upgrading the appearance of, you know, the facility around it. You know, it's just kind of the, the happenstance of timing that, you know, we've been sort of fast-tracking this to accommodate everybody's desires that just made it difficult for, you know, the professionals to communicate with, with a lot of, a lot of breathing room in it. So you know, I, I guess my comments are that I, that I do appreciate what, what has been presented to us and you know, in practically every respect, I see it as an improvement over the existing conditions. And, and I just do want to kind of follow up on Commissioner Dean's comment that it, you know, we did write these regulations particularly to allow us greater flexibility to deal with projects such as this where they're taking, you know, not a blank slate of, you know, virgin land. You know, but something that, that's you know, essentially lying fallow from a, from an economic development perspective and you know, trying to turn it into something a little more useful and attractive. So I'll get up my soapbox and ask if anybody else has anything that they, they want to say here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Jim.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for those comments. I wholeheartedly agree with everything you've said. And as I said, I do remember when it was a finest supermarket and due to whatever reasons, not much has happened to improve the look of that building. And what has been presented this evening is a phenomenal improvement. And maybe it's not perfect, but Mr. Alter hit the nail on the head and really laid it right out. We don't have a blank canvas here. We're dealing with a pre-existing situation as 99% of the projects are in Weathersfield. We're fully, almost a fully built town. We aren't Cromwell, we aren't Glastonbury, Barry. We don't have an abundance of land, so everywhere we go is a struggle. So if we want to get, you know, handcuff people coming to Weathersfield because we don't have impervious surface and everything's not perfect, well, we might as well just put the close sign outside. This is a very unique site because adjacent to this to the north is a piece of town, town property, which is now just locked in to be green space because it was presented to this commission years ago to do something with it. And this commission didn't want to do anything with it. So now this is a unique situation where in all my years I've been around it. If nothing's happened, I doubt anything's gonna happen to that town green space there unless you're gonna put some picnic tables there. So the green space that yes, the town owns softens and helps this space, this area tremendously. So as a whole package of from corner to corner, I think this is a great improvement and I thank the, I thank the, the owners for sticking with Weathersfield. I'm off my soapbox.
All right. Anybody else have any, anything?
If I may, my name is Leonardo, it's not Claudia, that's my daughter. My name is Leonardo Ubriari. This is our fourth project on Salistine Highway in Weathersfield. We've done, and we always buy the junk and we make it look beautiful. So you need to have a little trust in us that we are spending a lot of money. We hired the great people, Kevin Johnson and Peter Alter, to help us do this project. We want to thank everybody in the commission for, for helping us out. I want to thank Denise for her guidance. Even though I get a little crazy sometimes with, with too many questions and I drive her nuts with stuff, I appreciate your help Denise. And I thank all of you guys for helping us hopefully approve this, 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 this project that we have in front of us. And we are, we're bringing young people to the neighborhood who are gonna shop there, we're gonna get gas there. Mr. Knight is who saw us, the building is excited for us because all of our students can go eat at his restaurants next door, like Max Bebo's and Vito's and stuff. So we are bringing a benefit to the, to Weathersfield. And I hope you guys are happy with our proposal and I want to thank you in advance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments, anything that we need to wrap up before we close the hearing? No.
Make a motion.
Ask Attorney Alter if he has any final comments first.
The only thing I, on this issue of the northern driveway, what I would ask you to do if you seem fit to move forward on this application this evening would be just to leave a condition of approval that our engineers will resolve any safety or aesthetic issue with the town engineer shape of that particular entrance. It's not a big problem. It's just a, a matter of addressing what Mr. Allard mentioned, which was a safety issue versus a green space aesthetic issue. I'm sure we can find a, a solution there.
I agree. I think, you know, town staff and the applicants can come together on a solution there. Yeah, and I, I also think that, you know, there, there's the whole right of way width portion of the entrance that is being overlooked before you even get to the gentle curve. So I'm, I'm not thinking there's a big issue there, but I didn't get my engineering degree yet. Anybody else have anything before we close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second Edwards.
All right. Motion by George, second by Dave Edwards to close the hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Someone like to make a motion for purposes of starting discussion?
Mr. Chairman, which alternates are sitting on this one?
See, I seated you on the last one, so I'll, I'll put Dave in on this one.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve application 301222-Z. And the one component, I, I don't have a problem with the north driveway myself, but I'm comfortable leaving it with the developer to work it out with town staff and whatever other conditions that my fellow commissioners deem fit for this.
I'll second your motion and this is George and I also hope that the town engineer will inquire at DOT on that too.
George, I'm actually not worried about it and, and I don't think we should
I am worried about that more than anybody.
Well, yeah.
Not our private engineer and our town staff.
Yeah. I mean,
anyway, that's another issue. I hope it won't be a problem.
Well, that, I think the part that Derek was concerned about is, is on the private property, not in the state right of way.
Yeah, I think you're right. Right, right.
And also truly people cutting the corner. If, if you got that far, then that out isn't that great because you can't get out on Wells Road. So you, you, you're actually shooting, probably shooting yourself in the foot.
Yeah.
Not gonna be as easy as it is now, that's for sure.
Yeah, with the islands and everything else and the place being full of cars.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just as well.
Denise, is there anything that we need to do with respect to either the the waiver, non-wavers or the, the roof sign, non-roof sign? Or just to prove it as submitted?
I would, as a condition, approve the waivers that were presented. And then in terms of the, the signage, the design review commission was supportive of what was proposed. Depending on your feeling, if you are also supportive, I could, you know, just leave that as a condition to work that out with town staff.
I, I'm comfortable with my proposal to approve as presented with the waivers and I'll take the roof sign as presented.
I'll accept that roof sign, but I hope we don't see more of these. But I know this is such a shallow face in this building that it would be hard to, to put a kind of signage below where it's being presented.
Well, George, we could leave the
I think you gotta go.
Four-inch lolly columns there. They, they're pretty nice.
Yeah, or, or the cream colored Alamo on the top of the building.
Yeah, yeah, you really could. So.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing that I would suggest is just in terms of the number of parking spaces, just because it was something that's not specifically determined by the regulations, just if you're accepting of their proposed calculation.
I am fine with the proposed calculations with my motion.
Yeah, that. Yeah. Okay. All right.
That's all.
Any, any, all right.
Thank you Denise.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm Dean here. I just want to indicate I, I continue to be favorably impressed by the application. I tend to support the, the motion as, as this has been presented and, and modified just per the discussion. I'm, you know, disappointed that we're not able to adopt an approval that would substantially reduce the, the amount of imperviousness on the site, but recognizing that that would probably work an injustice to the applicant by forcing him to do much more than what he would ord, you know, ordinarily be required for typical special use permit for, we're just talking about a change of use from one kind of business to another. So so I, I, I appreciate the efforts of the commission and the discussion that has taken place and I guess that's, that's pretty much it in terms of my commentary on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Tony?
Rich, a quick compliment to Attorney Alter for refreshing our memories about 5.6 of the regulations. It's something I don't remember reading or hearing about since we did the 10-year master plan of conservation and development. So thank you, Peter, for refreshing that issue. It's to have this building occupied is to generate good taxes. As George would know, I would have some relevance to that in personal property. 60 to 80 students every day is only a compliment to the community and not just for, for the traffic pattern and people there, but the lunches and dinners in the area as well as the retail establishment. So great compliment to your family for making magic out of this site. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
And, and Tony, if I may, I've been on my soapbox all night. 60 to 80 potential new residents of Weathersfield once they come here and see what it's all about.
With your hair looking great.
You and me both.
All right. Anything else? If not, I guess we'll vote on the application. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Motion carries. Application is approved.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, good for you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other business? There's nothing. Next item, minutes of January 4th and February 1st. Has anybody had a chance to look those over?
Yes. Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. You want me to do them individually or together?
Let's do them individually because I think there'll be different people eligible to vote.
Right. Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 4th, 2022.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by George, second by Commissioner Dean. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Next one is the February 1st minutes.
I'll do the motion again, Mr. Chairman, to approve the, the minutes of February 1st, 2022.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Pete Wimbruni. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I believe this when I was not at.
Yep.
So.
I have a question for Denise. I have a question for Denise. Whatever happened to all of the applications that start with two thousand? I mean, all of a sudden we're like at three thousand eight.
New year?
It should all be chronological.
Okay.
I mean, I can't log into my VPN quick enough, but you know, there, there should not be an issue in terms of
Okay.
the application numbers.
All right, no, I thought, I thought we like skipped the whole thousand.
No, unfortunately, there's just been that many.
Okay. Guess I wasn't paying attention. Next thing, we have correspondence. We have the Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies conference invitation.
So I did receive notice from about four members indicating their interest in attending that evening, so if there's anyone else, please let me know and I will include you in that registration.
Yeah, and if anybody's on the fence, I would encourage it. One thing I noticed, you know, it's kind of sad that the the deadline for registration was March twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Was the last time, I guess, that they had one of these. Also included their quarterly newsletter, comment about an application from Hartford and something about the railroad vegetation management plan. Is there anything that we should really know about that or is that just for information?
Not specifically. I just wanted to, you know, in case you might get inquiries by, you know, people noticing any, any changes in the next couple of weeks, that's just a heads up.
Okay.
Denise, this is Tom Dean. A couple of issues, one going back to the, the, the March meeting of the Planning Zoning Association. Add me to the list of those that would be willing to attend.
Sure.
Also, you had mentioned the issue of, of people receiving certificates for longevity. Back in twenty twenty, there were a number of members of this commission that were to receive, I think, twelve-year certificates. I was one of them. Those certificates, to my knowledge, have never been issued. I'd appreciate if you would be able to, to get some clarification on the status of those past certifications and notify the applicable members of the commission as it relates to that, whether or not those certificates would be presented at this meeting or whether they have already been received by the, the Weathersfield Town Planner's Office.
Um, I am not sure if they're intending on presenting previous winners. We are not in receipt of the certificates in the office, but I can reach out to the CFPZA and see if they were printed, if they have them on hand and/or if we can get you a copy.
Okay, yeah, I was one of those that was supposed to be a recipient and never got, you know, anything relating to that and the meeting was canceled due to the pandemic, so. I think things have been fairly chaotic since then, so I'm not surprised that there have been uh, things have kind of, uh, washed down the culvert, so to speak, without anybody noticing, but I did think I'd mentioned that and, and there may be one or more members of the commission that are in that, that status or are eligible for such certificates you know, at, at this upcoming meeting due to the longevity of their service. Uh, thanks very much.
Sure. I believe Commissioner Hammer also was the recipient the same year, so I will confirm with him whether or not he received the certificate.
Okay, I thought he was going to be one of those because he served actually longer than I, so. And I'm not sure if he and I, he and I were the only ones, but appreciate some research on that. And, and when I reviewed the materials relating to the, the application of herbicide, which was for the, the railroad property, I, I was some, I'm, I'm somewhat concerned about that particularly with, with respect to the, you know, the half-life of the herbicides that are going to be used and the danger of, of such herbicides being, you know, washed into aquifers or uh, since the, that railroad runs essentially through uh, around the edge of a lot of residential properties in this town. Uh, the, you know, potential risks to residents from poisoning due to the application of, of herbicide, both poisoning in terms of, of human tissues and also groundwater poisoning from the application of that and I noticed they didn't indicate any particular kinds of chemicals that they were specifying. So I would, my concern is whether or not there's any oversight. You know, beyond DEP as it relates to the application of those chemicals inside the town. That's it, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, this is Pete. Denise. I really think you're doing a great job supporting us here, so I wanna commend you for jumping in and, you know, doing all this prep for us. What's going on with the town? Are they gonna give you a raise or someone else coming? What, what's the plan? I'm just curious.
I'm a little curious too.
Yeah, I was.
They are in the process of making a determination and I am hopeful that in the next few weeks that will be clarified.
Okay.
Wow, long process.
Point, Pete, because this is George and I've had the same feeling. And I've heard from other people in town that Denise deserves to maybe get a, a strong I'll say pat on the back, but she's been doing a great job there and I was even ready to go in and talk to the town manager about it and I haven't gotten there yet.
Well, I'm suggesting.
Denise, you deserve something out of this. You've been doing a great job.
I'm suggesting that this commission make a point on that. That's kind of what I'm alluding to.
I thought you might.
Okay. I don't know how we would do that, Mr. Chairman, but I mean, she's given us great support here in a very quick turn.
I'll have a conversation with the town manager on behalf of the commission.
Perfect.
All right. Anything else?
The only other thing that I have to add, I did provide you with some correspondence this afternoon regarding the cannabis establishments, specifically a survey of municipalities and their responses from zoning officials as well as some mapping that was provided from the, from an article I read the other day in the Insider. Additionally, the town manager has indicated that the town council will be discussing this again on their upcoming meeting on the twenty-second. At this point, they have not looked for additional information from me, but I am prepared to provide any additional information that they're looking for. If anybody wishes to attend, let me know and I can have a Zoom link forwarded to you by the manager. The only other thing, it's not noted on the agenda, but I did receive an application today that will be on the March first agenda. It's an application for the Charles. They're looking for a one-year temporary outdoor tent. So the difference from last year's application, they are looking to use the same tent, but they're going to relocate it onto the side yard where ultimately they, they would like to have their permanent outdoor dining. They're just not ready to proceed with that application at this point. So anticipate that at your next meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Denise, can you have them forward a Zoom invitation to me, please?
Absolutely.
Jim?
Want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Desperately.
Motion, motion to close the meeting.
All right, motion by Jim, second by George. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Night, all.
Good night. Good night.